He's going to pay us. He will.
Everybody got their mics on? They're not cracking and popping, I'm sure. Six o'clock, I'll call the May twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty With County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. If you would please rise, tonight we have Mr. Roger Krieger at the Rurie Treat Penacostal Holiness Church to provide the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Krieger?
Thank you, thank you so much for the opportunity, and some of you are not necessarily new faces, but new faces in the position you're in. And as always, I do commend you and I congratulate you on the positions you have, the job that you do do. I normally try to give out ink pens, but I feel that's not adequate for the circumstances we're in right now. So I thought, what could I do that maybe would just stay with you for a moment? Because you'll probably forget I'm here next week. But the word today, this afternoon, it just kept going over my mind was courage. I'm going to be praying for each one of you that you'll have the courage to be the leader, the best leader you can be. Because sometimes it takes courage to make the right choices at the right time for the right reason. I've learnt that the hard way in forty-some years of marriage, that when the right day comes around, you need to say the right word at the right time for the right reason. Let's pray. Father, we just truly thank you, Lord, for your many blessings upon us, for the beauty of the day, and for all your goodness to us. I do thank you, Lord, for this leadership team that is before us today, and for what all they do, what they accomplished. I admire them, I appreciate them, and pray, God, that you'll touch them all in a very special way. Let them operate with wisdom and patience and endures all the necessities they need. Give them what they need. And Father, as we've even mentioned this evening, help them to have courage to make the right choices, the right decisions, speak up at the right time for the right purpose. Just truly just lead them and direct them in all that they do. And Father, we'll give you praise for it, for we do ask it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It's always the first item on the agenda of Citizens Time. Do we have anybody?
Good evening.
Ms. Myers.
Ladies. Last, the last meeting, you said you were going to send a letter to the governor. Did you send the letter, and was there a response?
We did send the letter. Mr. Barrett?
We have not received a response, but we did send the letter, yes.
Okay. On Saturday, there was an article in the newspaper from the Mount Rogers Health District, and it gave the areas of our area, Southwest Virginia, with a total population of one-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand people. At that point, we had eighty-five cases of this virus, fifty-two recoveries, and we had six deaths. So, if you do some math, the cases at two-hundred-and-sixty-six is zero-point-zero-zero-one-three-five percent of the population. And with six deaths, it's zero-point-zero-zero-zero-three-one percent of the population. I went looking for the Emergency Service Board, the Virginia Emergency Service Board. There are thirteen people on it. They're all from the Richmond area, and it looks like they're all bureaucrats. We have a region four down here, or four people in our region that are supposed to be the liaisons to the Emergency Service Board in Richmond. The headquarters is in Marion and in Dublin, I'm sure you know that. I was wondering, have they come to you? Have they asked anything? Have they been to With County? Here we have four people, serving nineteen counties. That's pretty slim, and I was interested in what they did for us, since they're on our payroll. No?
I haven't talked to any of you, Mr. Barrett?
I have not, but I'll be glad to follow up with Curtis Crawford and see what interactions he's had with them in the process.
Right. Well, I think it's, as I asked before, it's time to be brave. Shouldn't the, this board, or any board, or Southwest Virginia, have a liaison or a person on the Richmond Board? Or not a Richmond Board, it's the State Board in Richmond, to represent us? That only seems fair, and perhaps you guys should get together with the other nineteen areas down here and do something about that, to make sure our voices are heard. So, in light of that, shouldn't we be doing something? Since we have almost negligible problems here in With County, I had asked you before to open With County, so we can get back to work, so our kids can play again, and everybody is safe. We have more chance of being knocked over by a cow in With County, according to these stats from the Health Department, than we do getting this virus. So it's time to open up, and it's time to be brave. And especially with forthcoming, the school season, hopefully, in August and so on, if somebody sneezes, are they gonna, are we all gonna fall by the wayside again and lock ourselves in houses? It is a little bit beyond ridiculous. So anyway, here are the stats. You can look at these, get out your calculators and do them also. Okay, that's number one. We had a gentleman from Ivanhoe, June sixth, nineteen forty-four. He was aboard the USS Rich in, at the Normandy invasion. He was killed. Unfortunately, there is no monument in Ivanhoe, and it doesn't seem, his name is Bruce Weatherman. There's nothing here, and I don't think there's anything on the wall in Rurie or Treat. And I was hoping that Coy, or the Board, could get together perhaps with Nadine Weatherman, who still lives in Ivanhoe, and there was also a son, and get this guy a plaque. He certainly deserves it, he is one of our veterans, and he is sorely missed in the Ivanhoe community as a young man and his life there. So it would be something to look into. Right, Coy?
Right.
His name is Weatherman, Bruce Weatherman.
Yeah, he's got, he's got a granddaughter that works for the, uh, Ma- uh...
Mike Jones.
Yeah, and he's got a granddaughter that works for the Health Department.
Well, it seems like the proper time, not a proper time, it should have been done a long time ago, that this fellow is memorialized someplace within the county, as a veteran, one of our veterans. Okay?
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Got that, didn't you?
Yeah. I've actually got, um, Mr. Farley, I guess he's upstairs, but he's actually got a list of people from World War II, because June will be seventy-six years, and he's trying to compile some information. Do we have anybody else listed? No one else listed, Mr. Chairman? You can open it up. Do you want to speak, sir?
I was just wondering if y'all...
Yep. Well, I need you to come to the microphone, give us your name and address, so they can put it on the record.
Edgar Testerman, one-fifty-two Saddle Tree Lane. I still haven't heard back from the state. Nobody's been over to look at the erosion along the bank on Edward Krieger. And I did speak to one state man out of Ivingdon, and he said there was no erosion, but the vegetation he put to hold the bank is hanging out from where it got washed away. The vegetation's there, but the roots are hanging out. I mean, I don't know what they want us to do, and I was just wondering if anybody had bothered to follow up with him. I'm still following up with Mr. Polygon and Mr. Campbell, and I plan on getting back with them tomorrow, but I haven't heard anything or seen anybody. My bank's being washed away, our, we're losing our yards, and it's at the head. If you go down the creek, they've come in and put rock in in places to shore up the bank, but they've never fixed the problem up there. I just videoed it this weekend with the possibility of floods, and you can see that all that water is flowing through the one barrel, and the other barrel is almost blocked on that bridge on South Twenty-One, so...
If, um, if you'll hang around, soon as we've got about two things to do when we get to old business, Mr. Barrett's got some cor- he did get some correspondence from DEQ.
Hope his was better than mine.
Just going down the agenda, but, and he can get you a copy of that, of what correspondence he's got?
Yeah, because I plan on going to Richmond. I mean, I'm not shutting up and going away, no matter what excuses they make. They say we need vegetation to hold the creek bank. It's washing the bank out behind the vegetation, we're losing all that, so I don't know what their plan is, but they need to get one. They spent three million dollars on Eller's Bridge and his road, and they can't fix the creek for us citizens that lived there and paid our taxes? Something's wrong with that.
We have anybody else wanting to speak? Hearing none, I'll close Citizens Time, move on to the agenda of payment of invoices, entertain a motion to pay the invoices as presented?
Yes.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Is there any invoice that any supervisor wants to pull out or discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next on the agenda is minutes of our previous meeting from May the twelfth, twenty-twenty. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Moving on to old business, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, sir.
Spiegel flooding.
Yeah, first thing is on Spiegel flooding. We did get in touch with DEQ, and we've also been in touch with the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services on the feedlot. We received a letter, I just printed copies of it, and we'll pick those up off the printer back here and give those to you. But basically, they indicate they received our letter. They indicate that Spiegel community, along with others, have experienced flooding events due to remarkable increase in the frequency, duration, and rainfall storm events during the past several years. Unfortunately, most of the community of Spiegel is developed inside the special flood hazard area and rated for zone AE. This indicates the majority of the community is subject to very high flooding probability and frequency. They, basically, the letter just goes through discussing the flooding that has happened. They, they have reviewed it, they are, they said they look at cooperative solutions to assist the homeowners, including grant opportunities, emergency declarations, et cetera. However, DEQ has no immediate source of funds or any programs related to addressing the needs of the affected citizens. They did also look at the Triple B Stone Facility area, and there was no evidence to suggest the activities were altering the stream flow characteristics downstream. And they have a plan submitted with the Departments of Mines, Minerals, and Energy to avoid stream alterations to the channel. And the, they indicate that the agriculture operations is outside of their purview, but like I said, we have contacted V-Dax in trying to get a response back from them on anything they can do to assist with runoff. And they indicated the, some of the measures, the best management practice measures, have already been putting in place up there. The, I'll, I'll get you a copy of the letter, but basically, it's, it's saying they're aware of the situation, but most of it's in a flood zone, and there's not really any solution that they have to assist.
Mr. Barrett, on the, the part where they say, however, DEQ has no immediate source of funds or any programs related to addressing the needs, so they don't have any... I was confused as to whether they don't have the funding, or they don't have any program that addresses that?
It was interesting the way that was worded, because it was, the way they have it worded makes you think...
I mean, if they don't have any programs, it don't matter if they don't have any funding, correct?
Correct. But that's, that's the latest we've got. I'll share that information with you, and it does have the contact name and information for any of them that you may want to follow up with individually also.
All right. Broadband?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just wanted to give you an update that's been a topic we've talked about a couple times. We had an initial meeting, Mr. Farley, myself, Todd Catchman, and then also Dr. Jeffries, and, sorry, the name of the gentleman from the school system with IT.
Russell?
Russell Street, thank you. Mr. Street, had a good meeting with them, had a online conference with Dr. Tamara Holmes. She assigned homework assignments, school boards already done their homework assignments, sent information in about the reduced lunch percentages, free and reduced lunch percentages at our schools. She is working on contacts with many of our existing service providers to see what type of grant opportunities that we have. So just wanted to let everyone know that that process has started. As we get more involved, we'll share information with you, but I know that it's been a topic that the Board's really been talking about, and hopefully, we can start getting some grant applications in on that. There was also discussions about the AEP project in Grayson County, and any impacts that that might have extending that program into the With County area.
Is, is that the first project like that that AEP is...
To my knowledge, in Virginia, absolutely it is, yes. And it was all part of that smart metering, smart monitoring system, which they've started putting up around parts of With County as well. So hopefully, that may be an avenue we can tag into also.
All right. Moving on under old business, the VDOT six-year plan.
Mr. Chairman, in front of you is a handout of some of the roads that were discussed last time. Mr. Fowler is available for us to call him by phone, and Martha's got the number over there if we want to call him. But basically, his estimated available funds that he talked about at the last meeting was nine-hundred thousand dollars. The roads that you all discussed are listed here, which obviously exceed the nine-hundred thousand dollars. I did ask him on the phone this afternoon about Gap of the Ridge Road. There have been discussions about splitting Gap of the Ridge Road, and it could be split into a half-mile section and a one-point-five mile section, he said, basically with Swallow Hollow.
What, and I measured that the other week, but I, is it one mile from...
He said one-point-five one direction and about point-five the other direction is what, what the distance was. So we need to, you all need to review these and decide which ones we want to put on our advertisement for our public hearing next month.
So the nine-hundred thousand, does that include the extra money off a major grant?
It does, yes.
Those, the first two roads are taking what money we got.
Mm-hmm.
I ain't doing nothing, it's a sanction.
The, you know, the, the problem I have with Gap Ridge Road is it's a safety issue. That, you know, that's, or I won't say the problem I have with it, I guess, the problem that presents itself. I don't know that we need the, I mean, the two-point-one miles is great, but how far does that, does that do the complete road, or is, that's still just partial, isn't it?
Uh, that is the complete road.
What's the, do you know what years the other, these roads are on the plan?
What years which roads are?
They're already, some of them are already on the six-year plan.
No, these are not on the six-year plan. Squawanda is.
Squawanda's pretty...
Squawanda is. I don't know why he listed that one. Squawanda is already on the plan. So I do not, I do not know why he listed that road.
Because he gets the same amount of phone calls as I do.
Okay. Take Squawanda off.
That, that was one that confused me.
Yep.
And did he, did he indicate why Crawfish Road was a...
He did not, but we'll get him on the phone and ask him about that. He'd like that, he did not indicate. Have, have we had people ask for all these roads to be on there?
Yeah, I get a call, a couple calls a week about Dora Run, especially now that the water's running everywhere. And then Connors Valley's on here, but just like he said, it's gonna be more of an engineering feat there, which we just talked about here on the sideboard before the meeting started.
And that's why I asked about Crawfish, because I, I mean, I know the problem's on Connors Valley, but I'm not certain what the...
Yeah, the good thing about Connors Valley, the road where they fixed it held up, but the rest of the road's taken a beating now, so...
Have you all received calls on any of the other roads? None of these are in my area, so I just, I don't know much about any of them.
I know we've had people complain about Gap of the Ridge, and I know we've had people complain about Sheffy Town Road, but I just didn't know about Riverview and Cinnamon Run.
Yeah, Riverview, it's in bad shape now, after the flood.
I'm a little surprised by the traffic count on Riverview.
Me too.
Why don't we go ahead and get him on the phone?
They did it on a good sunny day, not weather like we've been having.
First four-hundred-and-twenty vehicles a day on that road, that's part of the reason it's in bad shape. I, I wouldn't bet any money on it, shock me. Do you want to call him, Mr. Barrett?
Yes, uh, we'll get him a call there.
Is Riverview Road not, would that not be in a flood plain?
Lot of it is in a flood plain down there, yes.
Is that in Bearin Springs?
It's in Ivanhoe.
It's on Ivanhoe, that's it.
Yeah, it was all under water.
Yeah, I know which one it is now.
Earlier in the week.
Well, and that's a shady river.
Mr. Fowler's on the phone.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Yes.
We're, we're looking at the six-year plan addition options that were provided for us on, a couple of questions on Crawfish Road, why was it not rural rustic eligible?
Um, it's, it's very narrow, and in spots, actually, most of the road is very narrow, and there's a steep slope on, on the cut slope side, and a steep slope on the fill slope side, which would require more work than the rural rustic concept is designed for. It's, it, this would be a design-build project.
All right, thank you. And on Gap of the Ridge Road, from where it starts on the, the dirt portion on the Wesley Highway side to Swallow Hollow, what's the distance on that?
Um, it's one-point-six miles to the Swallow Hollow intersection from, let me pull that up. I'm trying to, it's one-point-five, it's point-five miles from one intersection, and one-point-six, let me find it. Okay, from, from Route eleven to Swallow Hollow is point-five miles, half mile. And then the remaining section from Swallow Hollow to Black Lick Road, Route six-eighty, is one-point-six miles.
For the two-point-one mile total?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And we can, we can split that project if need, if need be, into the point-five mile section or the one-point-six, whatever the Board would prefer.
Does anybody else have any questions? Just to make sure, Shewanda Springs is already on the six-year plan, right?
Yes, it is. It was added, it was added, so I should, should not have put that on the list there. It's already on the plan.
That's fine, just wanted to make sure it was there.
I was getting ready to go home, Ford, my phone calls to your house.
Yeah, so scratch that one from the new list.
Andy, this is Stephen, I want to get one point of clarification from you, I'm, I'm a little confused here. Um, you have route number seven-forty-eight as Riverview Road. And I want to make certain we're talking about the same road here. There, there's two roads down there in Ivanhoe. One is Riverview, which basically, um, when you go, turn off ninety-four and turn like you're going to the parking area for the New River Trail? That's Riverview, that's Riverview Road, and it runs back to the north there. Now, down further, um, down near the county line, is seven-sixty-four Shady River Drive, which is point-six-nine miles long, and it is a dead end.
No.
No. Well, it's, it is, by VDOT, it is a dead end. It comes back around to Riverview, but according to VDOT maps, it's not actually a state-maintained road between six-thirty-nine Riverview and the end of Shady River Drive.
Right, and it's actually, it's six-thirty-nine Riverview is the route that we reviewed.
Okay.
So that route number, seven-forty-eight, um, should actually be six-thirty-nine. It's a, it's a, we can actually do point-six miles of Riverview, Route six-thirty-nine.
Okay.
Mr. Fowler, do you have a chance to check Jones Road off of Red Hollow Road?
For six-year plan?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
Je, uh, did you say Jonas?
Jones.
Oh, I didn't, I did not see that one on the, on the list of requests.
Yeah, I'd sent it. I'd actually sent an email after our last meeting.
Okay, let me see. Let me look at it on the list and see what the... See if it's been reviewed in the past. Jones Road. It only has a, it only has a traffic, uh, average daily traffic count of thirty. So it, it, it would not qualify. It has to have at least fifty to qualify for a rural rustic build.
Okay.
That's, yeah, Route six twenty-eight Jones Road.
On your Gap of the Ridge Road, Andy, you said if it was split, the, uh, the one half-mile section or so would be about a hundred and ten thousand dollars?
Yes. Yeah, the half-mile section would be one-ten, and then the remaining would be, uh, three fifty-two.
And the half-mile section is from, um, just underneath the interstate to Swallow Hollow?
Yes, from Route eleven to Swallow Hollow. And, um, I, I guess, too, when, when you guys have the public hearing, there will be other routes recommended? Or, or we just, uh, are we just going by this list?
Typically, the goal is to, to come up with as, as accurate of a list as we can when we advertise the public hearing. But, uh, the board certainly has the ability to revise that as long as we have it adopted by June thirtieth, correct?
Yes. So, yeah, and with that said, uh, I guess, once we have the public hearing, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. But, uh, I'll be glad to, um, look at any other road that the citizens or the board might request to, uh, to have, have us looked at.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Fowler?
I don't.
Mr. Bear?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Andy.
Yeah, just to let me know when you guys are thinking you may want to have the public hearing, and, um, I'll work on it on my end to get it, get it advertised and do, do what we need to do to, uh, to schedule that.
You sure at nine hundred thousand, is that a, is that a definite number, or is there some wiggle room in there?
Um, that's, that's what we have programmed, uh, now to, to be added. And that, that includes, uh, taking a hundred thousand from the additional money we have on Major Graham Road. So, uh, as long as nothing changes with funding, um, over the next six years, that, that's what's programmed for the, for the current six-year plan.
No, it was worth a try.
Well, and, and two, with that said, um, you know, there, there's always, you know, a, a lot of times we'll come in and under on these roads. So, you know, if we come in forty thousand here and twenty thousand there, you know, it adds up. And then at that point, we could, you know, obviously, of course, it would be next year before we could add more. But anything we save on the, on the six-year plan stays in the plan to, to add roads in the future. So that's, that's the only wiggle room that we'd possibly be able to, to deal with. And that would be, uh, on next year's, uh, next year's meetings, six-year plan meetings.
All right, well, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Hold on, man, Mr. Fowler, don't hang up. I've got a complaint if you don't mind taking it.
Uh, sorry, I already hang, I already hung up.
Actually, it's an old complaint. It's the road going down to Asbury Church, uh, I was told it has not been fixed.
Okay, I'm making note right now, and I'll have that checked.
I don't know, I don't know if the name of it is Asbury Church Road or what it is, but it's off of...
That's right on Cedar Springs Road, right?
Yeah, it's off of Cedar Springs Road.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have that checked.
All right, thank you, sir.
No problem.
Mr. Fowler, this is Stephen Bear. Also, if you get a chance, if you could email us the, uh, paving schedule for this summer, just so we could share that with the board members?
Yeah, no problem. I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
He didn't get off the phone fast enough.
No, he didn't.
I thought, I thought I'd squeeze at least another fifty grand out of him. All right, you heard what Mr. Fowler had to say.
I think we can reallocate the hundred thousand off of Major Graham Road, two miles down the road to Doe Run. That's just my opinion on that one.
If y'all give me Gap of the Ridge Road, you can have whatever left.
See, I was gonna argue with you, because Sheffy Town Road, I believe the people have been here complaining longer about that one than they have Gap of the Ridge.
Well, I mean, the, the thing about Gap of the Ridge is, you know, on the safety aspect of it's what, you know, but we could do part of it, but I hate to do part of the road. Think about for Mr. Cox.
I was gonna say, wow, wow, we've done, we've done Pope Road in about five sections.
And it doesn't make any sense to me, man.
If you do, um, I hate to do part of road as well, but if you do the, um, one point six miles of the Gap of the Ridge Road, what'd he say, three fifty-two on that one? And then you can do all of Sheffy Town and Doe Run and come in at about nine thousand under what we have. I believe, if I did my math right.
That's exactly what I was adding up, and I, I think I agree with you.
And that one point six would go how far down?
It'd go one point six miles.
I know, that is landmark.
It would run from, I, I believe it would run from...
Follow.
Black Lick Road to Swallow Hollow.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Yeah.
But is that the part they were concerned about, or was, I thought it was the Wesley Highway side.
It is, it's the, East Lee Highways, with the safety concerns, with the road.
Well, Wesley, yeah.
Right.
That's why I asked how far it was to Swallow Hollow. That was... 'Cause that's where that big drop-off is.
Just 'cause they paved it don't mean it's gonna get guard rail. You realize that.
That comes out of separate fund.
Go down, go down Hogback. What's that drop-off on the right as you start into Hogback? Has it got guard rail? No, don't say it does, 'cause my daughter put a car upside down in that ditch. I know it doesn't.
Say it needs one.
It has needed it for years, but it doesn't have it.
It's, I think the bad section's on coming across the hill there. You, you, you hit more residents on the northern part of it. Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, that's the bad part about doing only half, or only part of it is the part that's a safety issue is not the part that's got the majority of houses on it. You really think that's accurate for Riverview Road?
I think it may have been, if they took it right there, um, depending on when and where. If they took it right off of ninety-four, you'd get all the people heading down Shady River as well, as well as getting people going to the park right there. So it'd depend on when they took that count. I think it's very high if it's just up on Riverview itself.
Yeah. I'd almost believe Coy saw the rubber thing across the road and started making circles.
Coy's car won't even trip him, thanks. What are you talking about, as small as it is?
Yeah, the three of them combined are just over a million dollars, if you did all of Gap of the Ridge, all of Sheffy Town, and all of Doe Run. If you did do the longer part of Gap of the Ridge, that, it would only leave a hundred thousand for your next six-year plan. So that would just mean one year out on it if you could pick it up the next year.
If you only done how much?
If, if you did the one point six for three sixty-two, then it would leave that a hundred and ten thousand dollars as a possibility for next year. And all the reason I say that, it's, you don't always get nine hundred thousand dollars every year to add to it.
Can they not do the one point six starting on the Wesley Highway side?
I was gonna ask that question, too. It's a stupid question, but why? What do they take into consideration to stop at a certain point?
Typically, it's just an intersection, but I don't see any reason why they couldn't do one point six from the other direction and just end.
Yeah.
I mean, typically, they go to a, but I mean, they could simply put one point six, just like Millers Creek Road. They went up one mile on Millers Creek Road and then a half mile on Millers Creek Road. So it could be done one point six miles from the southern end, yeah, from the southern end.
Let's check into that.
When do we have to make a decision on this, Stephen?
Well, what, what I would like to do is just give him an idea of where we're, you know, where we're heading, and I'll give him those numbers to pencil in, um... With those three roads, if that's all right for you all, we'll draft, we'll do our public hearing notice, uh, but we'll have those lined up as a, a good possibility, so.
I was gonna say, 'cause nothing's set in concrete. I mean, we could always change it the night or after the public hearing.
Basically, it's, if you do ninety-nine thousand for Doe Run, four forty for Sheffy Town Road, that leaves three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, which would just be a little bit over one point six miles of, uh, Gap of the Ridge. If that's y'all's pleasure, we'll send that to them.
And, and how much would it cost? In the future to finish Gap of the Ridge?
About a hundred thousand.
Mr. Smith, you gonna give me a hundred thousand next year? Remember this conversation?
Hopefully, they can save that on Pope Road.
Does that count, or do I have to actually verbally?
If you want to make a motion, I'll... Just, just remember this. I'm giving a little bit.
All right, well, Ms. Collins and I will work on sending a letter to, uh, Andy tomorrow to draft that as our preliminary six-year plan. We'll ask him to, if there's any way to squeeze out another hundred thousand dollars, we can get all of it done.
Well, that's one thing about leaving that part of it. They might find some cost savings on Mr. Smith's history. Help me out and finish my whole road. Moving on, have anything else under old business, Mr. Bear?
I do not have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to reports. We have the treasurer, treasurer's report. I don't see Ms. Gwen.
Ms. Gwen is not here. If you have any questions at all, I have her phone number. We can call her as well. Um, she didn't see anything, um, of any, you know, outside interest. She said they're still doing, uh, issuing their collections. I think important to realize on the real estate, uh, we're at ninety-nine point four percent of our budgeted numbers on real estate. And personal property, we're at a hundred and three percent, and that's a very good sign at this time of year to be at a hundred and three percent.
Moving on to Water Committee.
Okay, uh, the Water Committee met on May the nineteenth, twenty twenty, and recommends approving the Mueller agreement for the water meters and reading equipment.
You want to summarize it?
Yeah, basically.
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Well, I can, but...
Go right ahead, Gene.
Basically, it's the equip, it's the, the equipment we've been using, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, but we need to get some newer equipment, and that's, the agreement is, that's with that company. Do you need more details?
Mr. Bear, you have anything to add?
Thank you, Mr. Horny.
Coming from committee doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion?
Or did you want me to read all this?
No. I read, I read it, that's why.
I mean, it's not, but how many pages?
About fifty.
Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Uh.
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 So approved. Anything else from Water Committee, Mr. Horny?
Not that I know of.
Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Building Grounds Committee met, uh, May twentieth, uh, had the following recommendations. One, transfer of, uh, six hundred and thirty-two dollars from twelve oh two dash four three zero one five zero two, twelve oh five dash four seven zero zero one two for the VDM backup for the county service.
Mr. Bear, do you have anything to add to that?
No, sir, just a, a small transfer of funds, just so we can, uh, it's critical to get this back up, uh, have it in place.
Coming from committee doesn't need a second. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, Mr. Terry?
Uh.
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 So approved.
Proceedings from the MXN Corporation for the Courthouse Phone System Upgrade Project, a total of one hundred twenty-five thousand, uh, thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents, which includes the base system, new wiring, removal of the old wiring, and additional phones and installation of the Courthouse phones.
Mr. Bear, do you have anything to add to that?
As you know, Mr. Chairman, uh... The, uh, phone system of the Courthouse complex is a desperately needed upgrade. Uh, the one that's there has been in place since that complex opened in ninety-nine. Committee, uh, especially appreciate the help of Mr. Katrin on this, uh, have been reviewing all the bids, and, uh, we recommend proceeding and moving forward with this.
And that was actually seventy-four thousand and some dollars under budget?
Yes, sir.
Coming from committee doesn't require second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Uh.
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 So approved.
Due to COVID nineteen and CDC guidelines, the committee recommends not opening roll retreat Lake Pool for the two thousand twenty season.
Mr. Bear, I think there's more involved than that. You want to explain?
Yeah, part of the problem that, that we've had, uh, in addition to some of those guidelines, um, all the counties, uh, are having same issues, in fact, though. With Phil has just announced they are not opening their pool this season as well. Um, typically during the spring season and during the, that time, the pool is all, the pools that are open and the indoor pools that are open provide all the training for your lifeguards for the summer, where the pools have not been open since March for the inside pools as well. Uh, so it's difficulty finding employees to even open the pool. Uh, plus the expenses of opening the pool or getting it ready, you've got to start three to four weeks in advance. Plus, the expenses of opening the pool or getting it ready, you've gotta start three to four weeks in advance, and with the guidelines constantly changing, don't even know if you'll be able to open it at that point in time, and don't wanna put the money into that that possibly would not be able to be used.
Coming from committee, doesn't need a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 Go ahead, Mr. Cook.
Entering into an agreement with Jeff Fogleson for the hay removal of lots located at Roll Retreat Elementary School property. Any questions or discussion? Pretty straightforward. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Declaring the used light fixtures and bulbs surplus and some on GOV deal. Mr. Bear, do you wanna add anything to that?
Just basically, they've changed out a lot of fixtures and bulbs to get to more efficient ones, and we have done this previously before, and it's just advantageous to see if there's any interest in buying them, and instead of us just trashing them, if we get a few dollars out of them and someone can use them, it's good for us, good for the environment, both.
If anybody needs any fluorescent light bulbs, feel free to bid. Coming from committee, no second needed. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Accepting R and R's bid of twelve thousand five hundred dollars for the repair of the slope drain at Progress Park. Mr. Bear, you wanna summarize that?
Yes, on a couple of lots out there when, that were graded and created years ago, they have detention ponds up on them to hold stormwater, and over the years, the mouth of the lip of those drains has eroded out and is washed out. The area is lending, the pipes ineffective. This is to come back in, repair all the area around those pipes, and protect the bank from eroding off further.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Accepting Colt Simon's bid of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for the electrical installation at the Apex Center barn. Mr. Bear, you wanna summarize that?
Yeah, but this item and the next item both, the contract for the barn extended, basically included extending the water line out five feet outside the barn and also the electrical line outside the barn. This is running from the electric pole over there, running to the barn, so there'll be electricity for the barn. And then also, the next one that you're getting ready to discuss is also to run the water line from the western side of the Apex Barn up to Apex Center, up to this barn for water.
And this is just basic installation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or discussion?
I've got one question, Mr. Chairman. To make, this is above the original contract that was voted on, correct? Because they didn't price the job turnkey. Do I understand that correctly?
The original bid documents did not include this in with it, so this is separate, yes.
The money's, I mean.
The money's.
The money's budgeted, yes.
It's nothing additional to the budget, but it was not turnkey project.
Yeah, perfect.
Anybody else?
This is basically just connecting the barn to the electric and to the water, right?
Correct, yes. Thought it is.
So it's connecting it to the main line?
Yes.
So this is not?
It's connecting the electrical to the power pole, with the drop off the power pole for this, just like running electrical to your house. This is just the, there's a, running a conduit and installing the line from AEP's pole to the building. And then for the water, it is running a four-inch water line from the building down to the Apex building and connecting to the Apex's four-inch line that's down there. It's not connecting to the water.
Does that clarify what you were, so it's not inside wiring or anything?
Exactly, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I want a clarification on.
Any more questions or discussion? So they're still gonna need more money to wire the inside of the building?
No, that's all included in the contract.
I guess turnkey wasn't a, I guess depends on what you consider turnkey.
They're putting the lights and all the electrical outlets in now. That's already in the building. They just have nothing to plug it into because it does not connect to the AEP line.
I mean, I guess you can turn the key, you just won't have any light.
It's doing this instead of an extension cord, instead of a water hose.
Any other questions or discussion?
And this money was already in the budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 No.
So approved. Accepting King contract bid for seven thousand two hundred dollars for water line installation at the Apex Barn. Any questions or discussion on that? I just have a problem giving water to a barn with cattle and horses, and we can't get water to the people of the county.
I completely agree with you, Mr. Cook, and it, you know, this is one of those really hard items to bid on because the barn's there. All, you know, so much money has already been spent on it from the taxpayer dollars, and, you know, we ran into these with the main building. It's these little things that if you don't do it at this point, you're almost wasting taxpayer dollars by setting it up, you know, the inside for water.
There ain't no almost. You are wasting it, cause I mean, you're gonna put faucets in there that you ain't gonna be able to use.
Yeah, and that's what I mean. That's what I mean. So it's one of those things, I don't like to spend the money on it, but I've gotta support it because, you know, at this point, it's, to me, it's the only option. That's just my point of view.
Well, I think the majority of sitting up here just be glad to get it done. Where it goes, we'll talk about that later. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
No.
No.
Aye.
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 No.
So approved. Accepting Hurt and Profit's proposal amendment for the additional topographical surveying and engineering design services, left turn lane required for the exit seventy-seven lot development project. The cost of the amendment is eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Mr. Bear, do you wanna summarize that one?
Yeah, this is, Hurt and Profit has been working on the design of the road, the lots, the stormwater up there. When they prepared a traffic impact analysis for VDOT, the impact analysis came back that they were going to have to do additional turn lanes. That work was not within the, the design of that work was not within the scope of the original Hurt and Profit's proposal. This is the amount of money that would be needed for them to finalize all of the design documents for that project and then submit those to us for our consideration for future action.
And this completes? The traffic study part of it?
This completes the design, traffic study part of it, yes.
Any questions or discussion?
How long is this good for if we don't do something with that?
The, I mean, the plans will be good, it's, you know, the only thing would be if any situations change in the future on the use of that road, the VDOT will just look at that traffic impact analysis and see if it was still ballot or not, you know, if any changes need to be made on it. But generally, I mean, the road, the lots, all of that that's been graded, I mean, all of that's going to be good. The only change of it would be anything on traffic impact analysis in the future. But the restrictions are not going to be any less. You're at least gonna have to have these turn lanes.
So they've already got the plans completed, other than going back to do this turn lane, right?
Yes.
But you're saying regardless if, regardless of what goes in there, if it increases traffic count, we're gonna have to look at putting a turn?
Well, right now, what they're, what they're, they've done with what we've got proposed, with the four lots or the five lots that are proposed for there, the anticipated volume to go for that, all of that has been designed right now to, no matter what goes in there, this would meet the requirements for all that. They've taken, and I hate to use the term worst-case scenario, but they've taken largest-case volume or whatever, what it would take to go in there. So if a motel comes in or a restaurant comes in, they've calculated all those volumes in there to develop this traffic impact analysis. And that is what is determined that we have to have this additional turn lane to go in there.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 No.
So approved. Anything else from Buildings and Grounds? That's it. Moving on to new business, the consent calendar. Make a motion, we approve the consent. The calendar is presented. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Emergency operations plan, Mr. Bear or Mr. Crawford?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Crawford's here and.
I'll let Mr. Crawford address. The emergency operations plan has to be updated, and I'll let him review the plan with you.
So us along with multiple other counties around us have, this is our update year, and just so happen it happened in the middle of COVID. But so what we've got here is the new update for the operations plan. It's the basic plan, so there are addendums to this plan, but they are in the works. This is the part that needs to be updated. This plan encompasses the EFSs or the emergency function, service functions for the state. So when we put in a request, we can put it in under those requests. And each one of them has a designated leader or person that is in charge of that at our county level. And I have contacted most of them, and they understand that, the ones that have changed. We do have a few that have changed, just because emergency services coordinator was the lead of six or seven of them, and we had well-capable enough people to do other tasks, so we're gonna be doing that now. This plan gives us our information of the county, also gives us what each ESF is responsible for. So with that being said, is there any questions about the plan?
Any questions for Mr. Crawford?
I don't have any.
So what we'll do is, what we usually do with this is, we get it, when we get it approved, it goes up on the state level. It also goes out to the list of individuals that are in the plan to get it, and then it goes up on our website so that the public can get it and see it. Only, when, after this is complete, there are a few things that we're still working on, such as the family unification center annex. And what that is gonna do is, we're gonna work with Land County and a few other counties around us so that when we do, when we have a large-scale event, we are able to open up a center to reunify the families, also get information out. But we don't have the staffing to do that at this level, so we're gonna bring in multiple counties and have a regional attack, plan for that. A lot of our plans are actually going to regional, but that's the one that's coming the soonest. Other than that, you know, we're gonna continue to update as we go along.
Any other, or any questions, discussion? It was an interesting read.
Yeah.
I'd rather be reading it than writing it. Are you gonna update us when these things that you have that you're doing?
Right, so as they change, the board will have to approve each one of them. So we fall back to the last ones from the last plan that's online at this point, which they're very scarce, the ones that we have. So as soon as they get improved and updated, they'll come in front of the board.
I mean, like for Ivanhoe, you got working with Billy to get a key to the gate. We'll find out when there's a key to the gate. I mean, you gonna update those things that are on here?
You're talking about the status report.
Huh?
You're talking about the status report.
Uh-huh.
So yes, and we do have that key. Yes, that, I'll address that, I guess, in the next status report.
Anything else about the emergency operations plan? So we need to?
Need a motion to adopt the emergency operations plan, Mr. Chairman?
Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Curtis.
Thanks, Mr. Crawford.
Next item on the agenda, set the public hearing for the budget for June the eleventh, twenty twenty, six P M. Is there any need to change it, Mr. Bear?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. I have handed out in front of you the updated expenditure budget. As I mentioned at the last meeting, the school board received reductions in funding from the state. So the, the package, the number in the package that you received was fifty million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand and twenty-three dollars for the school board. The revised number is handed out to you, which is forty-nine million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. For our, for our budget, you have a total budget of eighty-five million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's a two-point-nine percent increase over the FY twenty budget. Highlighted increases in the budget include the reassessment cost of three hundred thousand dollars, one-point-three-five million dollars for wastewater improvement projects, including the Austinville Sewer Repair Replacement Project, which we have received about a twenty-five percent grant for that, the county office building project. And to note, the school system budget is made up of a one million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollar increase in its budget, but that is not of local funds, that is of state funds. The budget is requiring us to use surplus funds to balance the budget, as we have discussed. The current amount estimated to balance the budget is just over one-point-five million. However, note that as we have had discussions with the school system, we are hoping and anticipating that the school systems will have carryover of a million to one-point-five million, which would offset that amount coming out of our surplus. So also, as reminder, we appropriate funds quarterly. So if, if the COVID nineteen has major impacts on the revenue budget, the board can make mid-year adjustments to bring expenditures in line with revenues. Staff recommends advertising the county budget of the eighty-five million, eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars, and the associated school board budget of forty-nine million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars for June eleventh at six P M.
Entertain a motion to set the, you need both of them?
Yes, sir. It is in there under the capital improvement. It is under the nine thousand capital budget item. It is listed in there. Yeah, the two-point-eight million.
You want to do those separately, Mr. Bear?
You can, you can do them combined, Mr. Chairman.
Entertain a motion to advertise budget as presented for a public hearing on June 11th, 2020 at 6:00 PM for the county and the school board.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Moving on to staff reports, Mr. Bear, county administrator?
Good afternoon, sir. The first item, road name request. You have a request to name a road out in Pleasant Ponds. Ramblin', I'm sorry, Rumblin Ridge Lane. Staff has reviewed, it doesn't conflict with any other names. We recommend the naming of that road of Rumbling Ridge Lane.
That require board action?
It does require board action, Mr. Chairman.
Entertain a motion to. I'm trying to find it.
Page three thirteen.
Entertain a motion to name the road Rumbling Ridge Lane.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any question or discussion? All those, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'll just add, Mr. Chairman, I should have stated this at the beginning. Basically, when you get three residents off of a road like this, the E-911 ordinance requires the naming of that road. So you don't keep adding addresses back in there. So that is why the, the name request came forward. They are adding a third house on that property, which gave it a, a need to have an address. The next item of business, Mr. Chairman, is we have honored guests with us today from DSS and the Comprehensive Services Act. The, you, you have a letter attached there. Comprehensive Services Act program basically requires, and, and Ms. Ayers could address it a lot better than I can, but basically every year, we make estimated allocations of what it's going to take for the Children's Services Act, basically, for taking care of children that end up either in home situations or educational situations or others. What you have in front of you here is a request for an additional two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars in local funding in order to cover what is anticipated to be our local share of the expenses. This is not uncommon from what other areas or from a lot of other localities are seeing right now. Last couple of years, we've also had this issue, but we've had enough funds left over from the, the DSS allocation to cover that. But I'll let Ms. Ayers come and speak a little bit about it to answer any questions that you might have.
I've seen her, but I couldn't.
Good evening. As Mr. Bear said, the Children's Services Act encompasses mandated services. For about twenty-five, twenty-six years, the localities have received a certain amount of money that does require, that has a state match to it, to pay for services involving community children. Not all of these children would be considered social services children. Some of them come from special education, private day placements, residential placements, Mount Rogers places kids in certain group homes, residential centers and so forth. And then there are services provided at the county level or the community level. There is a tiered match rate. Our overall match rate is point two seven oh eight. And that is actually below what the state average match rate is. And depending on the service, the match rate goes with that. As we've looked back since 2017, each year, about the same time of this year, we are in need of additional funds from what the original allocation has been. That is where I have in my letter, a recommendation to increase that allocation on the front end, as each year we're going to be coming back needing additional funds for that program. And just to make it really clear, the program is a county program, just coordinated through my office. Sonia Ramsey is the CSA coordinator, Brenda Thomas processes the payments for all of the children that are receiving services. So it's not a DSS program. It is not uncommon in most localities for DSS to be the coordinator of the program. In Blaine County, for example, the county runs that program and is the fiscal agent. In Bristol, Washington County, someone from the Community Services Board coordinates that program. But for the most part, in most localities, DSS does coordinate the program. Here and with county, the CSA budget is included in my budget. And it's two very distinct budgets. As I've said before, children that are served through the program are not all children that are involved with my agency. So just want to make that piece really clear. So we don't have any control over how many children that Mount Rogers or Court Service or the school system or my own office would bring before the team for mandated services to be provided.
And I will comment that their team, between the FAP team and the CNPT team, which actually met earlier today, reviews all the cases at their monthly meetings, looks at the services that have been rendered, making certain, I'll ask the question all the time, is this required services? Is, you know, what are our sources of funding? What can we get from Medicaid? What can we get from others? What can we get from private insurance? This group does a good job. I understand Ms. Ayers doesn't like coming before you and asking for additional allocation. But the agency, Ms. Ramsey and me, all work hard to try to minimize the local costs as much as possible. You just never know. An interstate traffic stop could end up with three kids going into CNPT care or something another next week, you know? So it's, it's not a reflection of poor management on their agency. It's just a reflection of the cases and the situations that we have in the county.
Thank you for sharing that. As Mr. Bear said, we have no bearing on placements that may be coming through Mount Rogers or through the school system or even on our end. It just depends on the child and the level of need that may be involved. But he's right, I absolutely do not like having to come and share this because again, it is not my program. We coordinate the program for the community.
Well, and I, and I'll echo what Mr. Bear said and expand a little bit further. Y'all have had some odd cases this year.
We have.
It's.
We have. We've had some really bad cases since COVID hit. In some ways, it seems that my office is even busier. I know that we are on the benefit side. Our applications have, they went up a hundred and fifty percent in April for benefits, which would not be unexpected considering all that's going on economically. But on the services end, we've seen a slight decrease in the number of cases reported. But the intensity of the abuse that we are seeing is exponentially increased. We have had some really bad cases of, of child abuse during the pandemic. A little side note, so, but we just never know, you know, what's going to be coming next. There was some cost savings due to some of the services, such as the one-on-one aids, that could not be provided for the children that were receiving private day services through MINEC and through BRAC. So that, that was included in my letter. I will say that the private day centers, the private day educational centers have done a really good job with reaching out to the families and working with the kids for services that they are providing.
Ms. Chairman, I would recommend a motion to amend and appropriate two hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred dollars to the DSS budget for Children's Services Act funding.
But they're only asking for a hundred and seventy-five.
No, exactly. They're actually asking for two hundred and twenty-one, five hundred for this year. They're requesting an additional hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars be added into the budget next year to help cover.
So we can do that on one motion?
I would just do the two twenty-one, five hundred is all you need to do. The other, we will address as we're adopting our budget for next year.
Just a suggestion, so that this time next year, we may not be in a position to ask for any additional funding. As Mr. Bear said, this, we're in the same financial expenditure pattern as we have been for the last three years. This has been a matter of where my office is now, has been a little more stable personnel-wise. In the past, the board has been able to transfer funding that we've had as carryover funds to CSA. That's just not the case where in the last year and a half or so, we've been making great strides with our recruitment and retention.
Entertain a motion to amend and appropriate two twenty-one, five hundred to DSS.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further questions or discussion? Here and now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. How many ever times Corey voted to nothing?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, that, that is a, a, a large amount of money. I know that, that it's not easy for CSA, it's not easy for the CNP team, it's not easy for you all as well. But that's, it's just a cost to society.
We're, we're better off in some counties, I've seen in the paper.
Yes.
By far. Anything else?
Last item I've got, Mr. Chairman, is we had a resignation from our library board, so we do have a vacancy on our library board. So be considering names to add to the library board.
Moving on to county attorney report, Mr. Farley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was making sure my microphone was on. I don't have anything to report at this time unless you all have any questions. I handed out a list of assignments I've been working on and the current status of those at the moment. So I'm happy to take any questions if you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Farley? I will say, I told Mr. Farley when he come in for meeting, he sent the letter to exit seventy-seven Flying J about the litter. If you haven't seen the hillside, it, you couldn't find a cigarette butt on that thing, so. If you need a well worded attention getter, with Farley, if you want to.
And he's had that employee.
Well, I mean, we've been, we've discussed that litter problem for the three years I've been on the board. We apparently found the right angle or Scott found the right person to mail it to, so thank you for that. Anybody have anything else from Mr. Farley? Thank you, sir. Board of supervisors time, Mr. Terry?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Got a couple of things, following up with what Linda talked about earlier with the, with Mr. Weatherman. Got a message from Mr. Crawswell. Could we potentially look at doing a resolution to present his family on behalf of the board of supervisors to recognize him? I know that's a small step, but is that something we can look at doing in the future, sir?
Well, I mean, it's up to the board, it's not up to me, but I will say, Mr. Farley's doing some research. I guess Jack's comment kind of sparked everybody's interest with Memorial Day. But Mr. Farley's doing some research. We've got several World War II veteran, or several World War II veterans and we're looking at maybe him getting something together on, for next month. Maybe we can reach out to the VFWs and maybe get some family members up here and do something, so. If that's all right with everybody, it was.
Sounds nice to me.
And, but I, Mr. Farley is, as a matter of fact, I think he sent out an email earlier with some of his research.
The other two things I got, they kind, they kind of go hand in hand. It's one of those things, it's, it's a touchy subject and it's hard to figure out what the right answers are. But I would really like to see us find an action that we can take to try to help our citizens as far as getting our county reopened. And it's kind of a twofold situation. The First Amendment, you got churches that's open back up, but they're open back up under just crazy restrictions. Half capacity, social distancing. I think it ought to be up to the churches to open and make their own decisions as it relates to safety. I think the people's right to assemble if you want to get together more than ten or twenty people and hang out, you ought to be able to do that. That's kind of the First Amendment piece to it. The, the other part of it is a little bit tougher with the, with the actions our governor took today with the mask requirement. You know, if you want to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want to wear a mask, don't wear a mask. But I don't see where he's got the constitutional authority to make that mandate that we have to do it. And it's a huge deterrent for citizens and a huge deterrent for small businesses. Because I'll be honest with you, if I refuse service for not wearing a mask, I'll happily take my businesses down to Tennessee. I mean, that's just kind of where I'm at. You know, he's got way too much control. He's a straight up tyrant, in my opinion. And I don't know what we can do as a group of leaders, but we need to look at trying to figure out a plan because something needs to change. That's kind of my two cents and that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'll just tell you, I mean, I think everybody agrees that we'd like to be able to do something, but if there was something we could do, I'd say we wouldn't be the only county hopping on it.
Agreed, and that's, that's where the tough spot is. What can we do?
You know, the mask mandate today, the way it was set up with the enforcement to the health department. It ain't the West County Health Department, it's the.
State. Yeah.
I don't know, maybe Mr. Farley can dig around, do some research and.
If that's your direction, I will try to see if there's anything we could bring back as an option. It takes some time, so we're happy to dig into it.
Well, it, you know. I guess my piece too is, I don't see how Walmart, and I don't have anything against Walmart and Lowe's, but I don't see why that's any more dangerous than, you know, mom and pop shop.
Absolutely.
Well, I mean, my, my point on the mask is why wait three months?
Yeah.
After the fight.
There's a really.
I mean, he's.
There's really, there's a really funny thing on Facebook.
Yeah, I was going to quote that, but I shouldn't have to. But my opinion is, is he's trying to manage the state of fear, trying to put everybody in fear.
Yes, sir.
I'm not going to live that way. I mean, if he wants me to wear a mask, he's more welcome to come up here and put one on me. And I'll leave it at that.
It, Southwest Virginia has fought for years to be included. Then we were ignored and.
Yeah, exactly.
Now all of a sudden, we're important. Thank you, Mr. Terry. Mr. Hornet?
I had a lady call about flooding in Mule Hill. I don't know if, I forgot her address. I've got it at the house. I'll have to get it to Stephen. I didn't know the, she says there's a pond up above there and it's causing the problems. I don't know if there's any regulations over anything like that. But the other thing was the, if nothing else, if we could send our engineer out maybe to look at the branch and see if he can tell her what she could do to fix it. I mean, not fix it, but just give her some ideas of how to fix it.
Yeah, give me that address and we'll have Mr. Crawford and Mr. Kinsler taking a look at it and see if need to refer them to DEQ or anybody else in the process.
All right. Thank you, sir. That's all I had, except for my road, and I've already got the man before he hung up.
So, so the pond up there, we used to own land right at the end of the state maintenance. The pond is at the end of Mattany Flats.
Right.
Next to the hunting club. And it does cause havoc when there's a lot of rain comes out like it has been over the last couple of times.
Anything else, Mr. Hornet?
That was all I had.
Mr. McRoberts?
I just have one. Finding down the road, tractor there was trying to go across. They seemed to make it to make their sign that shit gets stupid wherever you're in the road there. And all that couldn't go, what did you do?
I think it was...
GPS.
GPS, not recommended.
He said it about one week.
Does VDOT do that, or do we do it? I know when I was on town council, we done the one for...
I think VDOT does.
I'll check with VDOT on it and see what we can do. I think VDOT has been the one that's, I think we have to recommend it, and then they're lucky putting it up.
And I did have called about the Grandview, which I did this, I thought we had discussed.
Anything else, Mr. McCRoberts? Ms. Lawson?
I have one thing, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bear, it's been a few months since we discussed this, but I had someone follow up with me this evening. The tractor and trailers that come down the service road and do the U-turns in smoking guns parking lot?
Yep.
We talked about putting more signage up to point them to Kent's lane, have we?
I came down there about two weeks ago, and as I turned in, coming from the east, I noticed there was not a sign there, and I called Mr. Bowers at that point in time, and reminded him that we needed that sign up there immediately, so we could have a sign put up. And it's not been put up yet, but probably as recently as two weeks ago, it was looked at. I'll do a follow-up with him and see if the sign has come in yet.
Yeah, I know with the COVID, everything's kind of been crazy, but I didn't want that to fall through the cracks.
You know, they still having issues, I know they've got a gate up and they keep it closed a lot. Are they still having issues with tractors and trailers?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yeah, when I talked to them, I mean, they were, hit the gate.
Yeah.
And they had the gate dim.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if they're not turning, they're stopping in the middle of the road backing up. And that's a bigger hazard than turning.
There may be some signs that literally say Gatorade, because Kent's lane, I mean, that doesn't really clear up GPS. I mean, I don't know the answer, because I know Gatorade's not the only business there, but, but anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Might get vandalized, Gatorade. Mr. Cook?
The green boxes, I know you had somebody talk to you about the handicap, the tenants taking out trash for the handicap, and there's no touch zone. The tenants don't want to take the trash out, period, because they say the handicap have, are normally the ones that have the needles and all that, from their diabetes and all that, and they don't want to lift it up either. So we kind of need to figure out which way to go on that, whether we give them some protection for themselves to lift up the bags in case there's a needle in it, comes through and stick. But then by the same token, the handicap people definitely need some help if they get out there and can't get the trash out of the vehicle. So we need to figure out some way to fix that that's equitable for both parties. And the only other thing I have is, I just, I question the legitimacy of spending taxpayer money to have the county attorney investigate something that we already really know the answer to.
Anything else, Mr. Cook?
No, sir.
Mr. Smith?
I got a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I know we talked about the speeds on 94 from Fort Chisel Road up to Jewel Lane or Drive. Continue to get contacted from the residents on that stretch of road right there, that speeds is, they want something done before someone gets killed pulling out of the driveways. And then also on Lot Scap Road, which I mentioned that I have reached out to the sheriff's department, from the top of the mountain to East Chapman Road, the speeds, the residents are getting a little restless there as well. And I'll be the first to tell you that I'll probably be the first or second ticket on that road, because I live on that road, and I have a trouble obeying speed limit signs. But it, something needs to be done. Something has to happen, because there is some children that lives on that road, some smaller kids. And with them being out of school, you know, they're out in the yard, and you've got it. It's not necessarily the sand trucks. I know in the past, that's been a topic of discussion, but it's more of, there's a couple of vehicles in particular, there, some of the residents trying to get tag numbers on. One gentleman, he's passing vehicles coming down the mountain into that residential area, so that's not good, that. So with that, and then I know you asked for the pavement schedule, which I'm hoping Hager Springs will be on that. I know that came up last time. And then just to follow up on one of the concerns that was brought up, I know you looked at it, I looked at it, but the view issue on the lot, the lady that lived in Gaylax, someone has went up and cut that down. So I'm assuming one of the residents there has.
Okay, good.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I will mention, Martha may remember the timeframe, but it was like 15 years ago, I think it was, that somebody brought up the speed on Lot Scap Road, and the person that brought it up at the board meeting, I think, was one of the first people that got a speeding ticket when the sheriff's office started working it. So it's...
I'll see you in the morning, Jamie. Mr. Bear, the road that I talked to you about down below Sheffey School?
Yes, Pine Brook.
Yeah, the same one we done when I talked to you. Did you follow up with Mr. Eversole?
I left him a message today. I've not gotten in touch with him.
I let him know that you were going to call him, since you knew the figures. And the green boxes that Mr. Cook brought up, have we?
We will schedule a meeting with V and M and go over that issue, because it's, I've heard about it from another individual as well, just those concerns and see where we can find some common ground of how we can address that issue.
I mean, we can, you know, we can get them puncture-proof gloves like, you know, police wear, if that's, you know, a concern. But... That's all I have. Anything else? Mr. Bear?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. Do not have anything else.
Ms. Martha? Make sure I got, clicked everything off the list. All right, we'll be adjourned.